Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna bring this meeting to order. I'm Jonathan Lansman. I'm the Chair of the Finance Committee and Treasurer for OCHN. And so I want to welcome you to this month's committee of the whole meeting. To my left is who I co-chair this meeting with. That's Yvette Woodruff, in case her phone... Oh, it did work. Okay. Anyhow, I'll be doing the finance side of this, running the business in the finance. And Yvette will handle our policy tonight. So with that, we'll start ourselves out with a roll call.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Furman.
Present.
Dr. Giles. Pastor Jones.
Present.
Ms. Woodruff.
Here.
Dr. Hans... Dr. Hans provided notice.
Yep.
Ms. Newman.
Present.
Ms. Root. Ms. May. Mr. Torres.
Here.
Mr. Cowan provided notice. He did say I had permission to tell everybody that his wife is doing great.
I... And I got that text, too.
And then, uh, Mr. Lansman.
Yes, here. Thank you.
Form on both committees.
Awesome. Means we can move ahead with the business of the business. Next item up is public comment. Is there anyone present who has any public comment to make? Not seeing anyone. Is there anyone remote who has registered and would like to make public comment?
If you are online and wish to speak to public comment, please raise your hand at this time.
Not seeing anyone. We certainly have a second opportunity for public comment towards the later part of the agenda. With that, we'll move on to the motion to approve our agenda. So moved. Thank you. Thank you. Is there any questions or discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, um, look for... All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next up on our agenda is the Finance Committee portion of the vote... I'm sorry, of the committee of the whole meeting. Cheryl, would you love to come up? Is Patrick with you tonight? Maybe not. Have a seat, introduce yourself, and we'll get going.
Good evening. Cheryl Johnson, CFO for OCHN.
Welcome.
Thank you. Okay, first chart we have is revenue. This is through December of last year. And as you can see, we're trending down somewhat. The line going across is where we were at last year. And for the first three months, we are showing a drop. So I definitely want you to notice that. If you can go to the... Can't hear me? Okay. Sure. These are the eligibles for those three months. And you can also see where there is a decline there, which kind of corresponds with the revenue decline, which we are concerned about and trying to keep a close eye on. But it's... You can definitely see the trends now. Okay, our cash investments comparison from September through December. We have had about $7 million more in cash investments. Our receivables went down about $4 million, which is pretty much timing. Other assets are about the same. And capital assets decreased just slightly, basically due to depreciation. Liabilities, payables went down approximately $1 million, which again is mainly timing. The other categories are pretty much the same as they were at the end of September. Our net position is about $3 million higher at the end of December than it was in September. So we're not seeing drops in that area yet, which is a good thing. As far as revenue compared to last year, we are up about $11 million. Not sure that we will continue to see this trend throughout the year. But at least at the beginning of the year, we're showing higher than we were last year. And our expenses are pretty much the same as they were last year. Net income is a little higher, which is basically due to the increase in revenue from last year, since our expenses remained about the same. And these are our 15 top providers. I don't know if you really...
Yeah.
They kind of are what they are.
Okay. Are there any questions from the Finance Committee? I do have a quick question for you. The first set of slides we had on revenue and eligibles.
Yep.
They seem to be the only ones that don't carry the actual numbers of persons on those charts. All the other ones do have numbers or dollars, you know, given the stats. So the eligibles and the revenue. And I'm wondering if we can...
I'll get that added for next time.
Yeah, because I've been measuring and trying to figure out what those amounts are. So that would be really great if we could do that. And I know that that last chart is that we always show is the top 15 providers that we have in terms of revenue. And I'm wondering if, do we still, now that we have an idea of who's getting what over what, how much time in the top 15 providers, do we still need that slide? Do people that are attending this meeting still care about that last one? It's this one that we've all seen? Because that's about two years old that people always ask. So who are our providers? So it's the last slide in this group. So I'm just asking folks, is that one still meaningful to either policy side or to the finance side?
I personally find it meaningful.
You know that the list doesn't really change materially. It's always the same 15.
I was... I like to see the amounts that we're paying. It's not the list of providers. It's more what we are paying and what the people that we serve are receiving as far as policy goes.
Okay, that's fair. But you gotta ask every so often to wonder if we... Our needs evolve and, just like I had some, if they're staying up with us. So thank you. I appreciate that feedback. Any other questions?
I would agree with Ms. May as well. I think it's just helpful to see, to look at, even though, you know, we know who the providers are, the top 15. But just to have the numbers in front of us every time we go through and look at it, I think it's appreciated.
Okay, great.
I'd like to ask a question on the, excuse me, expense comparison. And, you know, it'd be great that the expense is the same, okay? So the question, are we getting more for less? Or are we just balancing what we have? I don't know if other things may have been impacted that kept us at that level. So is... Normally, this would look as a positive, right? Expense, expense. So the question has to be, is it better? The idea that the revenue was up, right? Great news. The expense has held. Great news. So the question has to be, either what did we do different or thank goodness for whatever happened different?
My understanding, I don't think we really did anything differently as far as the expenses. I think that the number of people served, at least compared to this period of last year, is relatively...
Rather flat or something?
Yes, mhm.
Okay.
And that's what led to it. The...
All right, now...
The revenue, I'm optimistic, but realistically, it could be timing as to why it's higher during the first quarter.
Okay, because I know there was a lot of concern on that.
Yes.
On the providers, I wrote a note, and it may coincide with some of what else has been asked. Are we getting the expected from them? Are we exceeding the results from the people that we're providing, that are our providers or that we're providing, or what have you? And I may not be asking the question properly, because I think as I get through some other slides, I have a question in relation to performance achievement.
So are you... I'm sorry, I was gonna try to... Yes, you're talking about, are we getting the outcomes we hope to from our providers?
Are we getting that? Right.
Respectfully, I don't think that is a question finance can answer.
Okay, so then will we get to my buddy? All right, thank you. He's already prepared for that. Thank you. Okay, because I did that, you know. All we're getting is the payback there. And that's a concern in relation to the services and what we're getting.
Absolutely.
My buddy's getting ready for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions from board members? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great job.
Next on the agenda are contractual obligations, and we've got two on the list here. I believe the first one is American Guard Services. And Adam, I know you're presenting, but you've also got someone presenting remotely as well? Or is he in the back?
Yeah, Mark is on, so I can start, and then Mark can help me fill in any gaps that I might miss.
Okay, thank you. Ready? Yes.
So American Guardian Services. So at the conclusion of the SAMSA grant for the Youth and Family Care Connect, we agreed to cover the security costs, as it shows here, was previously covered by the SAMSA grant. This is in line with the services we provide to our other facilities of security. The contract currently ends the end of this year, 2024, and we plan on doing an RFP in June. We'll be looking to find a partner that will cover all of those areas. So yeah, this is what we're bringing to you.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have any questions on this? I have a couple of questions, just to get my hands around it a little bit better. I understand it's... You know, it's already been budgeted. We already anticipated the SAMSA grant going away. Have we ever thought about using the county sheriffs for keeping that building since it's on the campus secure? Instead of run... Rent a cops, if you will?
Sure, I'll take that one, Adam, if you don't mind. Mark Dugan, Director of Facilities, my apologies again for not being present. I'm actually on PTO today, but certainly wanted to be present to answer any questions. Absolutely, we've had conversations with the Sheriff's Department. One of the things that they required is a footprint in the building, and we're currently tight on space. We didn't have anywhere to put the Sheriff's Department. And then we had problems working out the funding because we were actually in a contract at the time. And so as we begin this RFP process, we are not taking anything off of the table. We're looking at how we can redevelop the use of the security services and that funding, if there's a better way to use that money, if hiring technicians to handle dual roles. We're just looking at all opportunities to improve security while trying to save some funding at the same time.
Thank you. The other question I have is, our CIT program is... Got all kinds of accolades. They're amazing. They train others, learn it. Are the folks that provide the security, I know they are required to have some training, but do they get our CIT training? Because obviously, when people are in crisis, they're coming to this building. We want to help ease down the level of anxiety, if you will. And I'm not a practitioner, so I chose the wrong word, I'm sure.
No, no, that's an excellent question. I work real closely with Trish on training for our security guards. Currently, they don't receive that level of training. But we are looking to improve their training. We're gonna add well-training to their list of trainings that we require them to take. But they are not currently taking the CTI training, CIT training.
Thank you. Are there questions from other board members? We've given a chance for the finance side, but I always like to make sure that the other folks get included since we're a cow. Hearing none, I'm looking for a motion from the Finance Committee to support this contract extension.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, to move it to the board, right?
To the... For the board. This is just support to move it to the general board meeting. Yes, thank you.
I was hesitant.
Okay. All right, so we have a... We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion on this? Hearing none, or seeing none, all those in favor on the committees... Do we need a roll call for this? No. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the MCMI contract review.
Ready? So this one is, I've learned a lot about dampers recently. So up on the roof, there are some... I'll explain them in the terms that I understand it. These are slats that allow in fresh air. They're very old. They are 40 years old, original to the building. And they, I'm told by Mark, they get stuck frequently and requires a technician to come out and get them unstuck. So we are going to be... We're requesting to replace the dampers. This will help a couple of things. It'll create... It'll help reduce the temperature fluctuations, which if you talk to any of the staff here, you'll understand some of the challenges of the temperature fluctuations. This will also help with the fresh air intake into the building. And we know that the CDC has stated that one of the ways to prevent the spread of viruses in closed spaces is to increase the fresh air intake. Also, and probably very good news here, this is gonna be covered from a grant. So this... There's gonna be really no money to us. This is all covered by a grant. So yeah, we'd like to move forward with this one as well.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the Finance Committee? Any questions from the rest of the board? Okay, I'll look for a motion.
Oh, I have a question.
Oh, please.
Yeah, so how long... So it's been 40 years, right, you said? So how long is the... Do the dampers last, and do they last us another 40 years?
It's a great question. Mark, you wanna try that one?
Yes, actually, the good news about these dampers, obviously, they're using a new and improved technology. And so we should get 60 years, is what they promised, 60 years. The last dampers were scheduled to last for 30 years.
Good, because that'll just about do it for me.
I was gonna say, I hope to be retired by the time they're replaced.
All right.
So, and then, so we already have somebody selected to do the project, then?
Yes.
Okay, do we hit the RFP for it, or we already did?
Mark, you wanna take that one, too?
Sure. Part of the process of what's getting done is that we have a controls piece. And because our controls are proprietary, we're using... We've submitted a sole source so that we could use MCMI because they're tying into our controls, which are proprietary.
Okay, so then we don't need to do that. We're not doing the RFP then, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so this is the best practice, then, you all feel for doing the dampers, okay?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
So at this point, and I probably should have waited for questions or comments till after a motion and a second. But I'll ask for a motion in a second to recommend this contract to the general board.
So moved.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Doc. Now, any other additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Let's see if there's anything else that's popped up. There isn't anything else on the agenda for the Finance Committee, so I'm going to turn the gavel over to Yvette to handle the policy side.
Thank you, Mr. Lansman.
Ms. Massey. Good evening. I am here to talk about the QOPPIT. I've asked Adam Hamilton, our clinical director, to join me as well to highlight some of the areas that he and his team oversee. And I've also asked Dr. Pozio to join me virtually. So each of us are gonna weigh in on some important information that you need to know about the QOPPIT. So in your board packet, you receive two documents. Both are pretty hefty documents. One was like about 90 pages. That was our year-end report. And the actual QOPPIT for fiscal year '24 is about 40 pages. So those, I'm hoping, you received them in advance of the meeting. So the intent was to give you a little time to maybe review those documents. So they were sent out a little earlier than the normal board mail update. But tonight, our intent is not to go over all the elements that are in those documents, but our intent is just to provide you with some highlights of some of the accomplishments for fiscal year '23 for the year-end report. And the QOPPIT for the fiscal year is actually a document that requires board approval. So both these documents are due to the board February 28th. So I'll be covering the QOPPIT structure and requirements. And as I mentioned, Adam and Dr. P. will be providing highlights for areas that fall up under their purview. And we can move to the next slide. So in regards to the QOPPIT, throughout the year, we provide updates to the board on various areas that are included in the QOPPIT. So for example, we report out to the board on performance indicators. We provide input presentations to the board on our member experience reports. That's the satisfaction surveys. We last talked about those in November. And we're gonna be coming back to the board, I believe, it's next month or the month after, to give you an update on where we are with what we're gonna do for satisfaction. Because the board wanted to be sure we just weren't looking at it once a year and coming to you. You wanted to know what was happening throughout the year on that. So our quality structure is set up where each of our quality committees align to an area that we have to report out to and be responsive to NCQA on. If you were to look at the table of contents on the QOPPIT, you would see where each of those committees fall out. And then we also have included in this PowerPoint a diagram of all of our quality committees. So in terms of what's required for the board, the board approves the QOPPIT, and we are required to give you periodic reports on QOPPIT outcomes and just exactly what's happening in the organization. This... More on this slide. I want to give you some feedback on areas that we cover throughout the year and report out to the board on in regards to the QOPPIT. So the board receives periodic reports on our Citizens Advisory Committees, the Recipient Rights Advisory Committee, and on our Citizens Evaluation and Education Committee, and our Substance Use Oversight Board. We also present activity to the board on our credentialing activity with our contractor for credentialing verification, which is Metriscent. We also provide compliance updates. And then some of the other items that we provide updates to the board on would be our Assembly Event Review Committee outcomes, our annual plan, and member experiences. And we can move to the next slide, please. So what is the QOPPIT and why is it required? This is a document that's required by CMS. It's handed down to us from CMS as a required document that must be in place, that outlines how your quality program operates. The state hands it down further to us, and it's in our contract that we have to have a QOPPIT. Our structure that we have here exceeds what the state requires in their... Our contract for the QOPPIT in that we highlight the involvement of our Chief Medical Officer. And then we also have multiple venues for input from individuals served. And we also have many workgroups that are functioning within OCHN that aren't part of the quality structure, so formally part of the quality structure. So those would be reported on that diagram under other workgroups. We can move to the next slide. In terms of policy and fiscal implications, I mentioned that it's supported by federal regulations. It's required by the state and our NCQA accreditation. It's also evaluated by our external quality review organization. So all these entities heavily scrutinize our QOPPIT to ensure that we are meeting all the requirements. We can move to the next slide. So the QOPPIT has... I mentioned how it's structured under required areas. These are areas that align with what NCQA requires. We have the quality of clinical care, safety of clinical care, quality of services, and member experiences. So if you were to look at the next slide, you will see the diagram of all of our different quality committees. And each of those committees follow up under one of those areas. So for example, quality and safety of clinical care. Examples of committees that follow up under there that are spoken upon in our QOPPIT would be the Improving Practices Leadership Team, Integrated Healthcare Committee, our Assembly Event Review Committee, and our Utilization Management Committee. In terms of quality of services, we have our Credentially and Privileging Committee as an example. And for member experiences, we have the CACC, CEEC, and the RRAC. Next slide, please. At year-end, in the year-end report, we are required to provide a summary of major accomplishments for each of the committees and to discuss any barriers that we encountered in regards to meeting the goals for each of those committees and recommendations for overcoming those barriers. And then our plans for the coming fiscal year. Once the QOPPIT is approved and the year-end report is reviewed by the board, that document is made public. It's on our website. There are instructions that we provide that tells any interested stakeholders how they could obtain copies of those reports. We can move to the next slide. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about next, quality and safety of clinical care. I'm gonna talk about our Quality Improvement Council. I'm going to talk about our Quality Improvement Council, and Dr. P and Adam will discuss the following three bullets after that. So our Quality Improvement Council is a committee that is required by NCQA. Membership on that committee consists of leadership of the organization. Dr. P chairs that committee. That committee meets quarterly to discuss individuals with complex health needs and best practices that we can implement to be able to address their needs. Some of the actions that have been recommended and implemented as a result of discussions and shared with that committee would be the continuing expanding of our ABA practitioners, developing a formal process for providers to consult with OCHN in the early stages of when concern becomes apparent before that issue would rise to the level of a risk of that. The nurse case managers that sit on that committee also report out on our population health assessments, which really speak to what our population of persons serve, the characteristics of that population, how's it changed from last year to this year, and what are we looking to do differently in order to ensure that we are addressing those needs of those individuals. And I want to turn it over now to Dr. P to speak about how our network physicians are involved in the HEDIS metrics.
Oh, thank you, Marquita. Good afternoon, everyone. My apologies for not being able to be there in person. But as you all may know, HEDIS measures consist of quality measures created by the NCQA. This data is tracked from year to year to measure health plan performance and provides valuable information about the population we serve. The measures track actual care received. The data is collected and intended to identify opportunities for improvement, to monitor the health of the general population, evaluate patient treatment outcomes and procedures, and provide an external performance measurement. The number of HEDIS measures vary from year to year as new measures are added and some are retired. In general, measures cover aspects of healthcare, including preventative care, such as screenings and immunizations, management of physical and mental health conditions, access and availability of care, patient experience, healthcare utilization, and resource use. One specific HEDIS measure that I'd like to talk about is one related to antipsychotic adherence. The HEDIS measure that we've been tracking with the assistance of the quality team actually led to the formation of a statewide workgroup headed by OCHN that's currently active and is looking at ways in which to improve education and decrease stigma with relation to long-acting medications, but also ways to improve adherence with oral antipsychotics, and make it easier for psychiatrists and other psychiatric providers to consider prescribing antipsychotic medications, specifically long-acting medications where helpful, to help to improve the overall adherence to antipsychotic medications in our population. And that process is done very closely with the medical directors who comprise the Medical Directors Advisory Group, which I'll talk a little bit about in a moment. And now I will turn it over to Adam Hamilton.
Good evening, everyone. I will talk a little bit about the activities of the Improving Practices Leadership Team and how they contribute to the CLPIP. Every year, the IPLT has a work plan, and some of the activities that we undertook in fiscal year twenty-three included reviewing and revising over twenty clinical protocols, developing three new clinical practice guidelines, and then we partner with our Utilization Management Team to conduct audits and produce audit reports on several of these protocols as well. The IPLT discusses evidence-based practices that have been implemented or are being implemented across the network. We look for opportunities to connect our provider network to additional training and resources to support and sustain those evidence-based practices. We talk about outcomes, and if there are supports available to help the provider network conduct those evidence-based practices with fidelity to the models that were designed for implementation, we will do that as well. Person-centered planning is something that comes up frequently, and we have a specific clinical protocol that addresses person-centered planning and the development of the plan of service. We also talk about training and making training available regarding person-centered planning. Trauma-informed care was a topic on the work plan for last fiscal year, and that continues to be an area of focus this fiscal year. And one of the clinical protocols or practice guidelines that we spent a lot of time focusing on, one that we also audited on, was our Clinical Pathway for Suicide Care. The Integrated Healthcare Committee is also under my purview. This committee does a variety of things, including working somewhat collaboratively with the Medical Directors Advisory Group on HEDIS metrics. The committee is a place where the discussion from the medical directors can be taken, and we can talk with the providers who would be carrying out interventions to make system-wide improvement on our HEDIS performance, and then those interventions are discussed and monitored to see how efficacious they are. It's also an area where a lot of educational information is provided to the provider network and collaborators who attend the meeting with us. One of the goals of the committee is to promote health literacy, so there will be educational topics presented on, things like social determinants of health, management of chronic diseases, cancer awareness.
Next slide, please.
I can just continue here with talking about our Sentinel Event Review Committee. This is one of the committees that addresses the quality and safety of clinical care, as Marquita mentioned. In fiscal year twenty-three, the Sentinel Event Review Committee reviewed five hundred and sixteen critical incidents. Critical incidents include arrests, deaths, emergency medical treatment due to injuries, or medication errors, or injuries from physical management, hospitalizations due to injuries, medication errors, or physical management. When the committee reviews these incidents and one is determined to meet the definition of a Sentinel event, the committee then requests a root cause analysis, and this is a process by which the provider works with the committee to investigate what happened, to develop a corrective action plan that the committee then reviews, and that is followed up to make sure that it is implemented, and the risk of that event happening again is mitigated through that process. Some examples of actions that were taken would be focusing on training to help staff adhere to clinical protocols, improving crisis planning, and improving internal processes that would promote care coordination.
Thank you, Adam. And Dr. P, you were going to talk about the Medical Directors Advisory Group.
Yeah, thanks, Marquita. And as Adam mentioned, the Medical Directors Advisory Group, also known as MDAG, primarily functions to assure that individuals served by OCHN receive the highest quality of care and clinical support services in compliance with federal, state law, and all regulating and licensing requirements. So the MDAG is comprised of a variety of individuals, myself included. I serve as chairperson of MDAG. The MDAG is also comprised of the medical directors of the core provider agencies or their designees, the medical director of Meridian Health Services, and the medical director of Honor Community Health. Additional members may be selected by the MDAG chairperson in consensus with the OCHN CEO, and consist of the following individuals: pharmacotherapy consultant, OCHN quality management designated, and other consultants who may be appointed as necessary. We've often benefited from, for example, from the participation of Dr. Faust from the Oakland County Health Division. MDAG is responsible for participation in the OCHN quality improvement process. Involvement may include assisting in the development and implementation of quality indicators consistent with the expectations and requirements of the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services and OCHN. MDAG shares the responsibility for identifying and implementing corrective action when appropriate. Other responsibilities include myself as being chairperson of MDAG, being the liaison with the Quality Improvement Committee, and the executive leadership team, that MDAG provide periodic monitoring of the safe and effective use of psychotropic medication, and that MDAG monitor physician-prescribed medication patterns and determine compliance with clinical standards. And so you can see how the activities of MDAG and the activities of the Quality Improvement Committee and following and analyzing the HEDIS measures on a regular basis all work in concert to ensure that the people that we serve receive the highest quality care and are on the cutting edge of medical treatment in serving the population and treating mental health and substance use disorder conditions.
Thank you, Dr. P. And then I'm going to cover the last two bullets on this slide. I want to talk about under quality of service, credentialing and privileging, and then our network quality improvement coordinators. So it's important and required that we ensure that any practitioners that are providing services to individuals in our network, that we have to ensure that they're qualified and that they are able to deliver services, and that services are being provided appropriately within their scope of practice. So we do that by conducting credentialing audits. We complete those audits on an annual basis to confirm that all these requirements are being met. We also have processes for ongoing credentialing. So what that means is that once you credential a practitioner, there is a process to ensure that that practitioner continues to maintain their licensure, that they are free from sanctions, and that there are no background check issues. So that is done for us through our vendor, MedFercent. We receive reports monthly from MedFercent covering those areas. We also meet quarterly with our network credentialing officers, and those meetings, myself, Dr. Posios, and our Director of HR attend those meetings. We are interfacing directly with our network leaders that are responsible for credentialing. That provides both staff and as well as staff here at OCHN a chance to be able to discuss ongoing credentialing issues out in the network, to discuss when an individual practitioner may not be eligible for credentialing because a primary source verification file may have been returned that has some flags on it. So that's considered an unclean file. So anytime an unclean file is returned, that requires discussion within our committee to determine whether or not we are going to extend credentials, credentialing and privileging to that staff. So we've had some really hearty discussions on that. Many times, flags may come back with a spot on a background check. So that requires some discussion with the committee members. And then we determine as a committee whether or not we would be moving forward with credentialing the practitioner. In terms of our network QI coordinators, that is a committee that's been in existence for quite a while. It meets every other month. Core provider quality improvement managers sit around the table at that committee. Our core providers are required to submit annual quality improvement plans to us. Those quality improvement plans feed into our overall CLPIP. We can move to the next slide, please. Member experience, I wanted to talk a little bit about that. I've already spoken about our committees that contribute to member experience. Our CEEC, that is a committee that has membership that consists of individuals served. That committee advises us on policies, new policies needed, policy revisions, reports that we issue, and provide guidance and input to us on formats to make those reports more, I guess, palatable for people served. In terms of member satisfaction, my staff presented to this board, I mentioned earlier, late last year, we're going to be coming back in a month or so to let you know where we are with looking at all the different areas of satisfaction. And Recipient Rights Advisory Committee, that is a committee that Vicky Suter reports out to this board on to let you know what's happening with that group. We can move to the next slide. I think we're at the point of questions. If there are any questions that we can answer, we will do that now.
Policy Committee, any questions? Ms. Newman?
So member satisfaction, we have not presented those reports specifically to the RRAC or the CAC. Primarily, we've presented those reports just to this board and our CEEC. So that's not something that we have done, that's something that we can begin to do, though. Okay, so the CAC and the CEEC, the activities from those committees are reported to the board through your board packets. So there's, that would be the feedback mechanism. Thank you for the question.
Ms. Root?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation and for putting this large document together. There's a lot of good info in it. When I was scanning through it, there's a couple different things I just wanted to ask about. So referring to page thirty-two, the Outcomes Improvement Committee, I was just curious how many individuals were served by this committee, maybe last year, if you have those numbers?
I don't have those numbers right off the top. Adam may be able to give you an estimated number?
No.
It would be a wild guess.
Yeah, that's okay.
I think we can get that information.
Yeah, I'm just curious, because the criteria, that's really serious, so I wanted to know how many individuals, you know, that was. And then I was also curious what the criteria for success was. So what's the measurement for okay? The OIC has been reviewing this individual's case, there's been an improvement, and they no longer need the support.
Adam, you want to take that?
I'll defer to Dr. Posios, he actually had that.
Yeah, I mean, I would say that there's no hard and fast criteria. It's really the consensus of the OIC, and that the purpose of the OIC is to really have a safe space for brainstorming on how to manage really, really difficult cases. These are, you know, the cases that we see in OIC are some of the more challenging cases that exist in our entire system. And so the purpose is to, we have a philosophy, you know, there is no dumb question, there's no dumb idea, so to speak. We really want to hear from everybody if there's something that they had a similar case in the past and something might have worked to improve symptoms, or to, you know, mitigate some sort of problematic situation. We're all ears, and we want to learn from each- We're all ears and we want to learn from each other to try to mitigate, you know, those experiences. And then also, from my perspective, you know, offer some evidence-based suggestions with respect to, you know, taking another look at whether a diagnosis is appropriate, if another diagnosis might be more, may be better explain a certain situation and certainly offer medication recommendations. But there is no hard and fast criteria. It really is the consensus of the group.
Sure. Thank you. It's important that we have that safe space and that there's that collaboration. It's good to hear. Next, on page thirty-four, I was looking at the critical pathways, and I was wondering, are these set in stone by another agency or could we add a critical pathway if we wanted? Because I was wondering about trauma and stress-related disorders.
So all of the clinical practice guidelines, clinical protocols that we have, the critical pathways, thank you, Marquita, they're developed and they're based on research that we do to find best practices.
Yeah.
We have some critical pathways that are still incorporated into our Provider Manual that were actually developed with a consultant years ago. We've taken some of those, particularly in last fiscal year, we took ADHD and developed, like updated it and developed what we're now calling a clinical practice guideline for that. And so it really, it all follows the same process. We'll start, we'll do some research here. We'll usually take a working draft to a work group of, excuse me, practitioners from the network and then put together what is kind of a final draft document that then is taken to the IPLT. Medical Directors Advisory Group gets an opportunity to give input as well from the perspective of prescribers. And then when we have a final document that we are seeking to publish, it goes out to the network for a twenty-day review. So it's a process that we make sure we're, one, basing it on research and evidence, but two, also incorporating the input of the provider network and the experts in the field to lead to a final document.
Okay. Would it make sense to have a separate pathway for trauma disorders or not really?
I mean, potentially.
Okay.
I've found that we've generally added more and not taken many away over the years.
Sure, yeah. Okay. Yeah, that just seems like something I'd like to see.
Yeah, we do.
Very specific treatments for trauma sometimes.
Yeah, we do have evidence-based practices for trauma in youth and in adults, so.
Yeah, I've seen the TFCBT was in this document.
Yeah, prolonged exposure and seeking safety are evidence-based practices for trauma that are available to adults in our system.
Yeah, okay, thank you. And then the last thing, I just randomly came across a small typo, I think, page twenty-nine, the second to the last sentence, in parentheses, it says music, art, and message. Is that supposed to be message or maybe massage, therapeutic massage?
It should be massage.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Torres?
I know it was discussed about how often some of these groups, the Quality Improvement Council, I think it was mentioned, they met quarterly. Is that the same for the review committees and the advisory groups?
The Quality Improvement Council does meet quarterly. The advisory groups, which advisory groups are you?
Well, just the one, like the Medical Directors Advisory Group.
Medical Directors, Dr. Posios, how often do you meet?
Monthly.
Monthly.
Oh, okay, they meet monthly. And then the same, would that be the same for the Centennial Event Review Committee?
That is monthly.
Actually, weekly.
Weekly.
Yeah. And the IPLT meets quarterly as well.
And then the credentialing and privileging, so I know you said if there is a, an issue or a problem or something that needs to be looked at by the group, they make a decision based off that, if there's something that comes up in a check that's not adding up. And so is there like a standard that they follow or is it just a consensus of the group that makes the decision?
It's real, we're sitting around the table with HR professionals. So the majority of folks around that table have a long history of experience. So what we typically look at is what's the issue, how long has it been since it's occurred, what's been happening with the person since then? So there is a structure that we follow for discussion and following that discussion then the decision is made to whether or not to advance the file for approval.
I wanted to add to Marquita's comments. You asked if there was a standard that we follow. We frequently refer to the Medicaid Provider Manual or requirements from other regulatory bodies to determine if there's anything that would preclude us from offering that credentialing decision based on whatever the item is.
Okay, thank you. And then with the credentialing and privileging as well, so you essentially look at to make sure that the credentialing is there, that, you know, they have what they need. Is there any part of that, too, that looks at like development or, I guess, is there any kind of push towards professional development outside of your credentialing? So you have your credentialing and then you said that they have to make sure that they are up to date on their credentialing, but is there anything beyond that? Is that, is it something that happens?
I don't know if ETNA is still there, if you want to take that, ETNA, but what I can say is that we are strictly guided by what NCQA requires us to do and what ETNA mentioned, the Medicaid Provider Manual. So we follow those areas.
From time to time, a new training, for example, will come down from the state impacting a person's licensure. And so in cases like that, you know, we'll have to add that to the checklist to make sure the person has completed whatever new training requirements are, you know, based on those decisions.
Okay, so that answers my question. So it's guided strictly on what is required and then any additional requirements that are put on assuring that they're complying with those requirements. All right, thank you.
Any questions from anyone else?
I have a couple. I'm not sure I'm on the right page. I don't know if I got the second session here. Quality Assessment, Performance Improvement and Plan, and Quality Improvement Program Description. So I don't know if you're going to go over that or is that part of this as well?
The plan is relatively static. What you have in the plan here, which is the smaller of the two documents, is incorporated into what the year-end report speaks to.
Okay. The question I have on page thirty-three, I think that's the page number, it deals with, it says, "Serving a diverse population," and it speaks to the population within Oakland County, and it says, "OCHN recognizes the importance of ensuring accessibility, accessible care that meets the cultural, racial, ethnic, and linguistic needs of the member population through assessment," and blah, blah, blah. And then it talks about the rising and shifting population in relation to ethnicity, but it doesn't give us, I was concerned about the percentage, the percentage. One sentence later says that Oakland County has, Oakland County is predominantly white and English-speaking. There are cities or communities. And so I'm concerned how we're reaching the population, okay? And this brings back a discussion we had, and we had one Hispanic to a rising population. And the note here says that there is, that we've identified a large proportion of individuals who identify as Hispanic and Spanish-speaking. And so, you know, I'm a little tossed in relation, I don't have the backup information that really solidifies the comments that's here. And then if it says what you're focusing on, how can you focus on something if we don't really have the percentages that show us where we ought to focus, whether it's the number, what is our first, second, or third focus? Over the last few months, OCHN has had several groups in of different ethnicities, and as I listen to them, they have certain concerns that we're not meeting, and maybe we're not meeting it because we don't have the total knowledge of the population, so we got to have the right people or number of people to address it. So that's a concern that I have, and this falls back to our having only one Hispanic, one Hispanic, okay, to cover such a wide variety and a wide population. It's, what's the word, discerning?
So what you have here?
I don't know how you do this. I don't know how you figure it, you know, I'm just looking for the relationship, the relativity. How do I, give me the right percentages so I know I got a one to five ratio or I got a zero to no ratio or something so that I, so that we could have a better focus on are we really meeting the needs? And part of that, and I think I raised the issue, we're in a period of time where people are very concerned with trustworthiness. How do I speak to my doctor? How do I really tell them where I am, what my needs are? And, you know, you got to know who you're talking to. And so we may be missing something that may help us to be more effective in the work that we do.
So I mentioned the population health assessment that our nurse case managers perform every year. That level of detail is contained there in that report. This is a plan. So we don't really get into details in the plan, but what you're really asking and looking for is in that other report.
And that report, I'll get it when?
We can make it available to you, yes.
Okay. I just think it would be very important, you know, for us to have it. And even in this report, if this is a plan, the plan may say, because we've seen the ratio at whatever, whatever, which would give us a little bit more detail in relation to how we're really focusing. You know, that's the thing. Whenever the report, and you guys do a great job, you know, I constantly talk about that, you do a great job, but the idea, if it's going to come later in the year, then I've lost X number of months of looking at something that maybe we could have looked at, maybe that would have been a better, that we could have addressed a little bit sooner. So I just, I just found as I got to that page, it raised some concern. And it raised concern because last year, we had one. Last year, we had one. And we said we were going to look at fixing that, okay? Thank you.
So let us provide that detailed report, and I believe your questions would be answered.
I have one question related to performance indicators. Looking at the data from twenty-three, were there any major changes for performance indicators for 2024?
Yes. For 2024, for the past few years, the department did not have a standard for, I believe it was indicator two, that looked at requests for services to the start, requests to intake. They didn't have a standard for that. Because in the past, we could remove exceptions. If like a person wanted to reschedule, if the person no-showed, we could remove those from the calculations of the indicator. Couple of years ago, the department moved those out. We could no longer take those exceptions anymore. So now, there is a standard. The standard is fifty-seven percent that was determined by looking at data reports across the PHP networks for determining a benchmark. So that was a major change for FY24.
And one last question. Under QA plans, are they based on the individual provider's previous audit year?
The Quality Improvement Plans align with the Quality Improvement Plans that we have to have here at OCHN. If there are problems that are provider-specific, then yes, those are added into the Provider Quality Improvement Plans. We ask them to report to us on any plans, on any performance areas where corrective action plans have been issued. They have to report to us how they're going to, how they have improved in those areas.
Okay. Thank you very much. Let's see, was that the end of your report or do you have?
No, that was the end.
Okay. So is there a motion to recommend we send this draft to the full board for approval?
I'll make a motion that we approve this to go to the full board.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Ms. Barrett, will you do the roll call?
Yeah, can I clarify the motion because you've got two reports in front of you? So there's the fiscal year twenty-four and then the outcomes for fiscal year twenty-three.
If I can just weigh in, only the fiscal year twenty-four requires board approval.
The other one would most likely for board record for receipt and file?
Yes.
Okay, so can we do both of those for?
Yes.
Will you amend your motion?
Okay. She amended her motion to include the final report for fiscal year twenty-three as well. And Sarah?
I second.
Thank you. So Ms. Barrett, if you'll do roll call.
Yes.
Ms. Root?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Torres?
Yes.
Ms. Woodruff?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Suter?
Vicki Suter, Director of Rights and Advocacy. We're here to, I'm here to present the recommendation of the Recipient Rights Advisory Committee. The committee will have a vacancy here in February and also will have another vacancy in April. And that is because those two members are completing their second term and so they're not eligible to do a third term until they're off the committee for six months and then they can reapply. We were able to interview a candidate that we think would be very acceptable to be a part of our RAC committee. We're always, we enjoy having individuals to be on our committee as long as they can because they bring great knowledge and they learn a lot, they become more comfortable. But we're always happy to have some new individuals as a part of our group, too. So the person that they're recommending for the committee is Ms. Renee Nettow. She isn't brand new to the committee. This will be her first term. In her interview, it was very clear that she believes that advocacy is important, sticking up for yourself. She's been a part of the rights process in the past, and the committee thinks that she would be a good candidate and would like the board to approve her to be a part of the RAC committee. So this would need to go to the vote at the full board.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Her qualifications and stuff was part of the packet? No questions. Can we entertain a motion?
To move.
It's got to be a policy member.
Yep.
If I move that, don't move.
And I support.
All right. Ms. Barrett?
That's me. Mr. Torres? Ms. May?
Yes.
Ms. Root? Ms. Newman?
Yes.
Ms. Newman? Um, Ms. Woodruff?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Um, so last month, uh, January 25th, at the last board meeting, uh, Christine Burke and I, Chief of Staff, um, we presented the, um, uh, Needs Assessment Survey, the initial draft, and received some feedback from the board, and also from OCHN staff, and, uh, some of our partners. Next slide, please. And, uh, what we presented, we, uh, uh, presented the key changes from last year's, uh, survey, and then we got some feedback. Um, so this evening, uh, we're just discussing some of the feedback that we incorporated from the board into, uh, the next version of the survey. And, uh, so the key changes, there are really just a couple to the survey design. Um, we added, uh, a field to capture everyone's zip codes, and then also, uh, made a couple of updates to some of the questions about the CCBHCs in case, uh, people receiving services were not familiar, uh, with the program. And then also importantly, uh, uh, created surveys with, that are translated in Spanish, and then also in Arabic, which will be distributed to some of the community centers, uh, some of our community partners. So, uh, those were the key changes. Um, next slide, please. Do you wanna talk about the timeline, or should I-
I can talk a little bit about the timeline. And part of when, when Dana talks to our staff a lot about being ambassadors, and I know she talks about the board being ambassadors as well. We're, we usually do what we call a soft launch of the survey. So when we're out in the community, we've, we've done a few tests here and there. We come back, we do some modifications. Once the board has approved it, we'll do a much larger distribution. We compile the information. As we said, we're gonna do something a little different this year. It, the survey itself, the needs assessment itself, will be, uh, one section of a much larger analysis. So we'll look at the individuals we serve within our network, what we hear back from the community, but then we'll also compare that information to data that the county holds, and then we'll bring that information back to the board in May. Um, one of the things we ask our staff to do, that we will also be asking this board, is to, with, with the convenience of QR codes, and a lot of Teams meetings, online meetings, that if you are in a situation where you're in a work group setting, or you are part of an event in the community, if you can drop the code into the chat and talk to people about the work group that we are participating in this needs assessment, a lot of times our staff will come to us, and I hope the board does, too. I just had a member of our team who, I was walking through the lobby, and she said, "My church is having a big mental health event. Can we, can you guys come? Can we talk about the needs assessment?" That meets one of the conversations we talked about in terms of being more engaged with the faith-based community. So in any opportunities where you learn about a community event, or, and you want us to be engaged, just let us know. We'll make sure that that happens. Questions?
Any questions? All right. Ms. Root?
Do we ask the Oakland County Commissioners to share the link to the surveys? Cause they seem to have a lot of followers, like on their Facebook pages and things like that.
Yeah, we do engage the county commissioners. Actually, the Health Division and the county government itself will send out our needs assessment on our, on our behalf.
Good question. The, um, visit the clubhouses and other sites? I remember you, you, um, talking about that before, you know, February to March. Um, is that, do you administer it there, or you hand out like hard copies, right? Wasn't it, or something, and then?
We hand out hard copies, but we also engage in conversation. So we will assist people who need assistance. We usually, it's a group setting, we stand in front, we talk, we go over the questions. But afterward, we'll ask, is there something not on the survey that you wanna talk about? And then we capture all of that information, we bring it back to our office, and we have members of our team who add that information into the survey for us. So they'll either type, they type in the answers, but then they also keep, we keep a separate doc that says, "This is what we learned during the dialogue with people."
And then, um, is that like a one-time event, or does that happen, um?
No, it, it will go, it goes on for the whole entire time that we're distributing. So it's usually two months. We'll go to, right now, one of the, we have our, our appointments, our visits set up for almost all of our clubhouses, our daycare, um, sites, and then we're working right now to coordinate with our SUD providers as well. So, and we'll go to our ABA providers, our vote providers. Anywhere where, where people will say, "Yes, come on in, we have a group."
Yeah, I think the, the feedback's important, and, um, and that's like the hardest part on any kind of thing like this. It's like getting people to respond, and the information overload, and, you know, those kinds of things. So, um, to have that tool is awesome, you know? The other part, obviously, is the way that we, we get it out there, and, uh, you know, unfortunately, like with links and things, and people are just so overloaded and all that stuff. So, um, but that's, that's good. So that's a good community to capture.
I also mentioned last time, we do mail a hard copy to all of our service sites with return envelopes, but in addition to that, so we have rights staff who go into specialized, whereas we have a training team. So people who, their normal job is out in the community, they take the survey with them as well. So it, it very much is an all-hands-on-deck. How do we get as much input as possible?
And then we'll, we'll get the information back in May, then, I see, then, um, and then it's, it's separated, right? Like categorically, or, or like the, the different populations that responded, if I remember correctly?
Yeah. So you'll have the, yeah, you'll have the overall results, and then the different categories. And then there is the option, if people wanna first complete it as someone who's receiving services, or if they wanna complete it as a staff member, if they wanna complete it from the perspective of a family member, they can take the test multiple times from those various perspectives.
And then do we have like a, a, I can't remember what the number was last year, like a, a goal number of people we're, we're looking to-
It was about a thousand people last year, which is, um, uh, at, at least, uh, yeah, not quite double, um, from a couple of previous years, but, uh, our goal is to just keep increasing the numbers as much as possible.
And then, um, you did say we, we had it in Arabic and Spanish, right?
Yeah, we're having it translated right now.
Okay. And, uh, yeah, so that we capture, kinda speaks to, um, the point that was made earlier about, um, you know, having that diversity of, of viewpoints, of, of information. Um, it's already hard enough to get responses, and then to get them from somebody who doesn't speak the language, that's even harder. Great. Thank you.
I do have one question. Um, I know you had talked about a percentage of the various service populations, like what percentage of ABA and all of that? What, uh, I can't remember what the numbers were that you were looking for.
Well, I believe last year, uh, the past couple of years, people receiving services were, um, the largest population represented in the survey. Um, in terms of the specific services, uh, I would, would have to go back and look at that. Um, I, in terms of ABA, I don't think we get that granular with, um-
Okay.
-the service level, however. Uh, but we do capture, uh, whether or not people, um, are receiving, uh, mental health services, if they are receiving SUD services, or, uh, justice services, and then, uh, some of the other community supports and the service array. So, um, you know, we do have some of that detail, um, which will be included in the final report.
All right. Thank you.
And this does require a board approval?
Um, I, I had one other question when we was talking about this, and I'm just wondering, um, on the survey, last year, um, we attended a meeting at Kirk in the Hills. And there were a lot of faith-based organizations and other organizations there. May the 22nd, I think that's the right date this year, uh, at Kirk in the Hills, looking at, um, trafficking, trafficking, the mental impact of that, okay? And, and, and as we know, it impacts a lot of young people, it, it touches all races, ethnicities, and all of that. Uh, and I'm just wondering, um, because there would be faith-based, or the, or, or the other organizations there, uh, if we could take that survey there as well? Maybe to distribute it to, uh, the participants? I know they are breakout sessions and what have you, but I think it would give us a greater idea. Uh, Michigan is what the fifth largest state, you know, in sex, in trafficking. And trafficking is not just, um, uh, sexual, it's also slave labor, okay? Organ labor, what have you. Organ distribution, not organ labor. But so, uh, I think it would be great for us because of the mental impact that it has on our total com- community. And as you mentioned, it's some families, maybe some kids, or maybe even some persons who don't want to talk about it. And it does cross all ethnicities. So, um, if it would be available, um, that maybe we could participate in that, uh, and, and even in what we're doing, uh, in relation to the mental impact touching the persons that have been engaged in, in this trafficking.
Yeah, we could definitely do that. And I think anywhere there's an event, our, our school mental health navigators will go, our customer service communications outreach. So we usually in, keep a hard copy of the survey when we're out in the community, and then we have the QR code in a stand so people can snap it with their phones. But the faith-based community is one of our priority populations.
Then that would be good. And then, um, about throughout the name, Bishop Teresa Lee, very, very interested in, and engaged in the, uh, self-trafficking. Uh, so it may be second, and the trafficking, I wanna call it total trafficking, uh, and a couple of others. So we'll make sure that you get those names, uh, to be able to reach out to them because it, it, it impacts all of us.
One of the other things, when, when we do collect the data and we put the report together, we usually have some type of a community forum, just like we do with the annual plan. We share the information and ask people to provide any additional input, and, and that will happen right up till the time when this board approves the annual plan. So we're constantly putting the information out and waiting to hear back from people in case we miss something. There, there have been times we've gone through an entire process with the survey, and then, I think we took it, the results to the CAC, and somebody said, "Hey, um, we're not touching or talking about elderly people in our community." And so we did make some changes. We, we make changes right up until it's approved by this board.
My concern is that there's two other organizations that we're working with in, in, uh, common ground, and also dealing with the homeless situation, and all of those things really focusing on, on the trafficking. So the more that we can get that survey out and know, then that's gonna help us to know who we treat, well, how we treat, and what services, you know, we're offering. Thank you.
We, we could probably modify a question if we wanted to. Yeah, we can add some, we'll look at it, and we can modify if there's a very specific area, we can include that question in there, more, for that event, yeah, we can do that.
Will we receive like a hard copy of the QR code? Or, I mean, I could also just probably make one and print it at home, but I'm just gonna make it my mission to make all my customers at the bar fill one out, so.
Yeah. You can, you'll have an electronic version, and a PDF, an actual hard copy flyer. We can get you one.
And I, or I can print, I can make it, too, I guess.
Yeah. No big deal, we'll take care of it.
Any other questions? Uh, is there a motion or recommendation?
I'll make a motion that we, uh, present this to the full board next week.
I second that.
Been moved and seconded. Um, Ms. Barrett?
Ms. Newman?
Yes.
Ms. Root? Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Torres?
Yes.
Mr. Woodruff? Ms. Woodruff?
Yes.
I can't, I can't even read my own writing. Motion carries.
We will now turn this back over to Mr. Lansman.
Thank you, Ms. Woodruff. Okay, next on the agenda, uh, is now our other business, and we start with events and outreach. Suzanne, please.
Good evening, everyone. Just wanna highlight some of our outreach efforts for February and a little bit into March. Um, as you can see, we have attended a couple of career fairs this month, um, so kind of working towards our recruitment efforts for, uh, staff, as well as some of our staff have attended some conferences for some staff enrichment. I wanted to point out the Call to Solidarity event that happened last week, uh, was well, very well attended. We have almost, we had almost a hundred individuals participate, and, um, a packed morning with a lot of information. We had a couple of board members attend, so thank you so much for that, as well as some elected officials. Speaking of elected officials, Dana is very busy over the next couple of months, meeting with some of our elected officials, just to have some conversations and do that visibility for, um, OCHN. Next slide, please. I just wanna mention on this slide, we have our annual abilities awareness event coming up next month, early next month on the 5th, as well as we are gonna be launching our Threat Assessment Initiative, and that's gonna be on the 15th. Next slide, please. I have a little correction there. It's actually our February press releases, so that's the listing of all the press releases that have gone out, actually already gone out in February. It's been a very busy early month. Um, but just as importantly, I wanna bring your attention to a couple of interviews that we had last week. Dr. Poseos participated in an interview on Channel 4 Plus, which is on there, which is their streaming. Um, and he talked about our, the mental health tips that we had released, um, regarding, following the verdict of, um, Jennifer Crumley. But I also wanted to point out that Dana was also in, um, an interview, and, as well as members of our access team. And I'd actually like to share that with you this evening. So we're gonna go ahead and click that link, and have you, uh, let you have an opportunity to see that video if you did not see it live on Channel 4.
In the aftermath of the Jennifer Crumley trial, we've been digging into mental health resources for any families that might be struggling to find help. Uh, perhaps you know crisis hotlines exist, but you might wonder what really happens when you call. Paula Tutten, it takes us, uh, to show an inside look at what trained ex- When they pick up that phone.
I've just been having a really hard time lately. I've been having some dark thoughts, um, that are pointing me in the wrong direction.
Patrick Morton, a licensed master social worker, has gotten calls like these in his work as an access supervisor at the Oakland Community Health Network.
Nobody understands. I've never shared this with anybody.
Never feel like that you alone, never feel like you should've never called.
Tridina Taylor, also highly trained as a licensed master social worker.
I think this was a very brave step for you to take.
And in addition, a certified advanced alcohol and drug counselor.
And that's why I'm gonna stay on the phone with you, and that's why I'm gonna help you get through this until someone gets there with you.
Together, they are improvising scenarios they have had to deal with when they are on the other end of a crisis call.
Things started going wrong at work, uh, I was taking on too many additional responsibilities. When the voices started coming back, I just really wasn't, I didn't know what to do, and I didn't know where to go, and now here we are again.
They wanted people to see this, to understand that help is a phone- They wanted people to see this, to understand that help is a phone call away.
And so you want to do what you can, keep them on the phone with you. You want to make sure that they feel safe.
Trained help, compassionate help, active help.
Our job is to make sure that we're available to provide those services when they call, when they walk through our doors.
When a call comes in, depending on what's going on.
Concerned about what might happen once they get here.
These trained professionals will virtually hold your hand and walk you through a crisis. In Patrick's scenario, he does not want police.
I'm here with you. Okay, so they're part of my team, they're part of my team.
If a mobile crisis team needs to be dispatched, it will be two or more trained professionals who show up together for hands-on services. There are scenarios when a co-responder team has to come in, consisting of the licensed clinician, who will travel with law enforcement to keep them safe and the caller safe.
So I, I work really closely with them.
But the first point of contact on that call is the other soothing voice in gentle touch, who gets the handoff from the counselor on the phone.
It's a push and pull, it's a tug of war, so to speak, where the voice in your head may be saying, don't trust, don't trust, don't trust, but you're listening to this person, and they're, what they're putting out, the feeling that they're putting out on the phone can be very warm, it's like being drawn to the light.
Yeah, so I, I want to stress again, these are trained professionals who are showing us a scenario of what people, of what they actually go through, and, and some of what some people might actually say. There are resources out there, they are out there, even if they are virtual. And our ClickOnDetroit.com team, they've done a wonderful job putting together a resource page. So if you know someone, or if you feel like you are in acute crisis, or any kind of crisis, you can easily find someone in your area. Devin?
So important to know. All right, Paula.
I wanted to share that with you because it's a great opportunity to highlight the wonder, the expertise, obviously our CEO, and the expertise that we have just a phone call away for people in crisis, but also just when they need access to services. So we're really happy with that. We're also grateful for the connection and partnership with our, our media partners, so want to continue to have those relationships. Um, I also wanted to mention that, um, the Community Mental Health Association Traveling Art Show is well underway. We actually have some 27 beautiful masterpieces in our cafe right now. So if you're, you have some time after the meeting, you're welcome to go and view the masterpieces in the cafe down the, down the hall, and you can vote if you'd like as well. I just wanted to mention that. And that's all I have.
Any questions from the board? Thank you.
My first, you are first? I want to thank the, um, uh, I want to thank the, uh, staff and, and OCHN in totality for the solidarity program, a, a meeting that we had, uh, February the 8th, uh, great attendance, and, uh, I, I think it really brought a lot of us together in addressing a lot of the many issues, a lot of the challenges. That we had, one of the most, uh, exciting things about that meeting, uh, this time was, was a lot more interaction. Uh, I tell you what, I think people came ready to just say, hey, I want to open up now, different from the first one where we did a lot of listening. So, uh, to the staff that just went way overboard, um, for, uh, to make it a success, I want to say thank you, and all of you, the publicity that we, that we had was really good. I'd like to throw a challenge out, the Lynx organization, um, is having a, uh, because of Black History Month during the month of March now, they would like to do a, uh, health initiative dealing with African-Americans as far as kidney ailments, but I've also mentioned about mental health and the dangers of opioid. And so, uh, certainly want to make sure that we invite OCHN to take part within that, and, uh, we're trying to solidify that date, that we'll be in concert with, uh, Oakland University, uh, William Beaumont Hospital, and also Trinity Health. So, we'll get that to you, but, but thank you for, uh, the solidarity and everything that everyone did, you know, for that, and I, I think there were over a hundred people or something, or groups here, so it was just, just success. Thank you all for coordinating that, carrying it through, and I think we reached a lot of people. Thank you.
Was there someone else at the corner? Oh, I thought there was the second person. Okay, thank you. The other ones? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Sheila, you're up next with the, uh, retreat, or did you want me to cover that?
Um, it's okay, um, in your, in front of you, you have a copy of the proposed agenda. Mr. Cowan asked me to distribute that for you. Um, it starts at 8:30, continental breakfast, and planning to be right around 1 o'clock. Um, when you get there, there's going to be a sheet in front of you to pick lunch, and they're going to come around and collect those around 10 o'clock. So, it's at the Marriott, you should have all received an invite, Marriott in, um, Pontiac. Does anybody have any questions? If you do, I don't, I don't know the answers. Yeah, yeah, Dr. Mr. Cowan.
Well, so I will add something to it. Please don't be late, we have a lot of, we have a lot of items on the agenda, we want to get through them. And it's about us as a board, so it's a good chance to mingle somewhat similar to when we were up, uh, in Kalamazoo at the conference, to get to know each other a little bit better. So, welcome all of us.
And I, Ms. Chair, uh, I have to apologize that I would not be able to be in, in attendance at that one.
That's right, I recall you were saying that a few days ago. We'll get to it the next one.
Um, Dana, I forgot to put the slide up regarding, um, board member appointments.
So, um, I almost forgot myself. I, first of all, I just want to take privilege and, and thank the board members who attended the winter conference in Kalamazoo, five of you were there with us, and that is a first since I've been a part of this organization. So I really want to thank you for your support and just participating in those meetings. Um, and then also, thank you for the events that we've been having, people have been showing up. It's really important for the community to see you all present and supporting the organization, so I want to thank you for that. And then board appointments, we had, uh, three or four members up for reappointment. Dr. Giles will be joining us again, as well as, uh, 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 who else am I forgetting?
Mr. Cowan, Mr. Furman.
Mr. Furman, Mr. Cowan, and one more. Am I missing one?
Dr. Hans.
Dr. Hans, sorry about that, it's been a long week already. But, uh, I will say that, um, the Board of Commissioners, the Legislative Policy Committee actually invited me to that meeting and allowed me to have some input into the reappointments. And so all of the four that were up for renewal had requested to be reappointed, and it looks like it'll go through the Board of Commissioners for full approval. So that was good. And we also have a, a board member, uh, Dr. Sarah Guadalupe, who I have to mention was a very, uh, critical part of this board, is seeking reappointment. But at this time, we don't have a, a seat available, but if one becomes available, we absolutely would like to have her participate. And if she wants to participate on, on maybe the SUD Oversight Policy Board, or some of the other, uh, committee meetings, we welcome her back. I'm, I don't think there is anybody who would say no to that. Um, so, uh, that's all I have for those reappointments, so I'm happy. I really appreciate the support of the board, and the last year has been amazing, so thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is the second opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone on site here who wishes to make public comment? Okay, is there anyone, uh, remote that would like to make public comment?
If you are online and wish to speak to public comment, please raise your hand at this time.
Not hearing anything. Uh, we'll move on to, uh, board member comments. And we'll start with you, Pastor. You get to go first this time. Or would you like me to start from this end, so you can gather thoughts?
First, I have to make sure I get a vote. No.
You can vote if you'd like to make comment or not. All those in favor who would like to have Pastor, uh, Jones make a comment, raise your hand.
Raise your hand, aye, thank you.
Any opposed, say nay.
There you go, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Let, you know, I've said this before, and I'll say it again. We have the most efficient, thorough, energized, energetic group of people here. This staff, what you do is just unbelievable, unbelievable. And, you know, I know that, um, you know, we'll challenge and push back, but I tell you what, you take it in the way that it should be. How do I improve it, how do I do it better? And I, I tell you what, I am so excited about what you do, how you do what you do, and where we're going. So I really appreciate that, and, and I said it before, I said, I know it starts at the top with leadership. Thank you so much, Madam Chair, uh, Madam Director, but I, it's, it's so important for us to know what you do, and for the community to know what you do and the lives that you touch. So, um, my comment to you is, hey, keep doing what you're doing. Uh, you know, I'll keep pushing at you too, but, uh, just thank you for what you do. Thank you, and, and my fellow board members, thank you all for telling me when I have the right to support and not to.
Ms. May?
I just wanted to thank the staff for putting together those massive reports for us. Um, and that's it, appreciate your hard work.
Ms. Newman?
I want to, uh, commend the staff that presented at the fall, at the winter conference. Uh, Christine and, yes, yes, Ms. Carly, Dan, and Sammy, Sammy. Uh, the, the description that was in the, in the brochure about what you guys were going to talk about really didn't do it justice. And it was just electrifying, so I just want to make sure that, um, I know you know how much I appreciate the work that you do, but it was good to see people from around the state that would just mesmerize with what we had going on here in Oakland. So thank you for that. And also thank you for the call to solidarity, that was an excellent event.
Thank you, Ms. Newman. Pass, okay. Ms. Woodruff?
Uh, thank you to all of the staff for putting together your presentations on tonight, um, because without, and thank you for taking the questions, because without clarity, we can't make good decisions. Um, it was very refreshing to, uh, finally get to see where we're at financially at the end of the fiscal year, looking forward to plans for the rest of the year. Thank you.
Dr. Giles?
I'd just like to echo the thank you for your patience and your commitment. Um, I also want to apologize for scooting in late, and I feel like I need to say Happy New Year to you all because I've been gone the entire month of January, um, but I'm back and I'm ready to get to work. Thank you all.
Mr. Torres?
I was, I was going to mention it earlier, I was thinking, uh, about the retreat, um, I don't know if we've talked about or thought about, like, how the workplace looks, um, you know, I, I think we're hybrid right here, a, a lot of staff. So I know a lot of organizations are relooking at their space, and I know that's something we've looked at here. I know previously, I think we still have two tenants here, right? Do we still have two tenants? Right, and I don't know if they're in person or how that works, but I know we have a lot of space here, so I don't know if it's something that we work or look, um, as we move into the next year as far as, uh, fiscally, if it helps us in any ways to rent more space, if we have that, if people are working hybrid, um, or what that would look like. I know it's been something that, uh, we're seeing everything from Detroit to, you know, even in our own state governments of, of what our workspaces look like, and with people, so many people being remote. So I don't know if that's an opportunity that we explore, and maybe if it's something appropriate we talk about at the retreat, or if maybe it's a, um, a work-study session or something like that, but, um, just wanted to put that on, on the radar. And then kind of going with the theme tonight, appreciative of all the information. It is a lot, um, of information that you, you give us, um, and as we go through it. And really, you know, we ask questions, and even the questions that I ask, you know, I just want to know. I just, you know, not saying that you have to do it, or if it's, but what I've found in, uh, rounding 22 years working in government in my career, everything from an administrator to a caseworker, to a probation officer, um, to a manager, that, you know, I find when you get people from different views, uh, and ideas together in a room, and you listen, it can be very collaborative because there's a lot of things that I think that I know, but I don't. And the only way I'm going to know is if I hear from other people and other experiences, different levels, different walks of life, uh, and, you know, stuff like that. And not, maybe not every idea that this board puts forth is, comes to fruition, but I think it's important that it, that it's heard and vice versa, because we, we're not part of that day-to-day. Um, I don't know what the day-to-day looks like here, but, um, I'm able to find that out by asking questions and getting more information. So, uh, thank you for the meeting tonight.
Ms. Root?
Thank you. I never thought I'd say that I'm excited about some rooftop dampers getting worked on, but I'm sitting here with my cold little hands, and I am happy to hear that. And sometimes we overlook, you know, the, the work environment, but it is so important to have a comfortable environment where our staff are, our visitors come, um, the individuals we serve. So, yeah, that was nice to hear. And then also happy to hear about our four board member reappointments. Thank you.
Mr. Furman?
Again, I'd like to echo, uh, a lot of the sentiments tonight. Thank you very much for the staff's time and diligence in putting the, uh, not only the packets and the, uh, PowerPoints together, but also the in-person presentations, or virtual as appropriate. Um, they were really informative tonight, again, as always, so thank you. And I'd like to, um, express my appreciation for my ability to serve another three-year term, and I'm looking forward to the board retreat on Saturday. So have, have a good evening, and I'll see you on Saturday.
Thank you, Mr. Furman. Um, I want to take a moment and thank the finance folks, Cheryl, um, and the quality folks, Marquita, um, and Adam. Uh, it's helping us to understand what this, not only what the date, did I forget you?
Can I ask somebody, if you add to the board meeting, I forgot. Do we have a staff recognition day?
That's every day.
We do it at our monthly staff meetings, and I know we had acknowledged a 45-year, um, staff person who's been here 45 years, and we wanted to do something special, and we've talked about that. So staff recognition, we have an annual picnic, we have annual things that we do, but also every month we recognize our staff that are really applaud, we should applaud, but also recognizing for their accomplishments and things of that nature. So, did I miss anything? Longevity, so we acknowledge that as well. And then, um, we are always trying to invite you all to our annual holiday party, our annual picnics and things of that nature, you're always welcome. And that's where we do a lot of our recognition.
Yeah, because I think they do such a great job, and I like to just celebrate them. We'll, we'll talk about it.
Okay.
So with 30 seconds left of my two minutes. Uh, I forgot to say Suzanne, Chris, uh, oh my gosh, uh, Kristy Burke, and, um, Frances. I can see Frances from there. She's the only one in this line. At any rate, I want to thank you guys for helping, helping us get the understanding what the information is there, because information is nice, but understanding what it means is so important. And so for finance, I know that's, that can be sometimes daunting. I know for Cupic, I get it. The quality stuff is important, and so I'm glad to hear that in the statistics stuff. So, Marquita, you just do, you and Adam, just did a great job with that. So I appreciate getting to read through this material, because I, I do. So thank you all, and the, and you guys that are just running the meeting for us, and telling us where to stand and what to say. So, thank you. Next, next we have to invest in a teleprompter, so I know when to stop talking. Uh, but thank you, and if there's- And if there's nothing else on the agenda, we've exhausted it, so we are now in recess. Our adjournment.